The very. Presses and staff review on item three.
Make the motion outside there.
Motion second as all comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes. Carry on in all favor. And more than passing anybody in the audience wishing to be heard on an item. Move forward, meaning materials have been distributed in a normal fashion, let's move on to item. There, revolutions, order, action, item A is the pre-annexation development agreement with Farmstead. Yes, you taking this or reject or just?
I was going to have Jessica take the lead on it.
Yes, yes, this is our recommendation from the commission. Um, for several items, the annexation zoning and sort of like during that for the Farmstead on Falls at the northeast corner of. Falls and Fort Washington Road. The annexation would include an eight point six acre parcel and dedication of dedication of zero point nine acres. Of public right of way along Falls and Fort Washington Road. The annexation is consistent with the recently amended comprehensive plan. Um, and the annexation will extend to the center line of both Fort Washington and Falls Road. And will connect to the municipal boundary at that point um of the intersection. The developers or the commission has recommended developers requesting a P U V zoning district. Um, we're gonna allow for some flexibility. And then if the annexation and rezoning are approved, the developer will go back to the plant commission for detailed site plan and conditional use. Permit sets as well as a report. Brian Claire is here available for questions.
If you want to take uh item A as a separate item.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the uh approval of the development, pre-annexation development agreement and then. Items, the plant commissioners is the annexation execution itself.
Right.
Okay, alright. Um, okay, anything you wish to present before we move forward, or you wanna just Q and A?
Um, happy to do Q and A about the development, there is one change in the in the development agreement that we would like to propose. Um, and as you've seen in the agreement, uh, there's one word about the impact fees. Which we've been presented with in early. The impact fee were provided in late twenty two for the twenty twenty three impact fee. Uh, which is one point three three million. Um, and in here in the agreement, there's some language about how it's subject to change. While we're looking into the development agreement and we're looking to honor the full impact fees but are looking to. Cap the impact the exposure at the twenty twenty three budget. For a period of time that matches our requirement to pull building permit, which is a hundred and twenty days from our final approval. As you can imagine, impact fees are an important part of the budget and we wanna lock in without any fluctuation, a cap on our exposure. To what has originally been asked by the village. Other than that, the development agreement is uh acceptable to our team and we're ready to pursue.
So, Mr. McLaren, you're suggesting to amend um item C on page seven, is that the section you'd like?
I had some language here from our attorney, I'm happy to share a copy of it now with everybody. Uh, but basically, yes, paragraph C under section four in our assessment of these. We would pay the full schedule of twenty twenty three impact fees and we're just looking to. Cap the exposure to understand that the village has engaged in impact fee analysis. And we want to be able to rely on the one point three three for a period of time. Uh, if we're delayed beyond the hundred and twenty days that we agreed to for our building permit, then the impact fees. We would, of course, foresee a change.
Hundred and twenty days from what what would be the start date?
Our final approvals. And at the moment, we're planning on submitting for April twenty seventh and being back in front of the planning commission architectural review board in May. So it would be a hundred and twenty days from that May meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Good question.
Yeah, I know, let me just real quick for the started is is there a general. Sensually okay, any question or?
Well, I wanna ask Jessica a question about that.
Alright.
Um, in the past, has has this affected any other development we've had where they changed mid something? And then we've had to charge them more in impact fees?
We've never done what Mr. McLaren is proposing. Um, we've always, it's always been phrased that building permit or excuse me, impact fee rates. Are paid um at the time of building permit and whatever fee is in place then shall be paid. Um, I've never had an an example of the fees changing in between. When a village board approved a a development agreement and when the fee was actually paid. Um, but this is a a unique circumstance, Mr. McLaren mentioned. We are, uh, we have engaged with a consultant to do a review of our impact fees. Um, and I think it's unlikely, but possible that they could change um in the next a hundred and twenty days. So, but still, what obviously one point three three million dollars is is certainly the consistent with our twenty twenty two fees. Um, which meets our current, you know, ordinances.
But in the past, nobody has.
No, it's our twenty twenty two rates, excuse me, no, yeah, no, it's it's the twenty twenty two. Right, because we have not updated that for twenty twenty three yet.
So these are twenty twenty two, yes, because the project started then.
No, just because that's what's in place currently.
It's right, it's a bit of a mix, if I can clarify, so the police public works and park facility impact fees have not been updated in twenty twenty three yet. Those are still fees from twenty twenty two, the E R C fees and the station fees that you see there have been updated in our twenty three fees.
Is it atypical for the village to change impact fees mid-year? Or are they usually fixed for a period of time?
Sorry, one more time.
Is it atypical for the village to change impact fee rates mid-year or are they typically set for a calendar year?
Correct, normally they're updated early in the year. Um, however, we did not update the park, public works and police department impact fees as those will be studied. During this year, we have a project ongoing whereby we're gonna have a consultant come in and review our impact fees, those particular impact fee um structures.
In our clerk has some information on this.
We always set the impact fees um about the beginning of February based on the C P I index increase. That's how our ordinances are written. However, with the inflation or the index going up about, I think it was eight percent this year, seventy percent. Um, that was a lot to increase impact fees by, which is why we're putting in place the review of the impact fees. But typically in the past, every year, we've always set them in the beginning of February for that year.
Okay. So it would still be our hope since the proposed fees in the agreement that they would stay capped at. What the village has shared with us and it showed us for the duration of our planning.
Hundred and twenty days, it's only four months.
To clarify, would be a hundred, we're looking. I mean, I.
I'll I'll just note our office hasn't seen this language yet.
We we have, we have.
Oh, you have seen it, okay.
Draft, um staffer moved it from the version that is presented to the board because again, it is not our typical practice. And I described to Mr. McLaren that he could bring it up to for for village board consideration at the meeting. Which is.
I have proposed language, I have copies I can share and we can agree on the language later as long as we agree in concept.
President, would you like him to distribute the proposed language?
This is more.
Do you have any idea, I mean, then, because. We don't know what we could be looking at with an increase in the impact fees.
It's unlikely that they'll increase, I I'm much more confident that if if there's any change at all, they will potentially decrease.
Oh, they could study them and say they're too high?
Yes.
And so would we honor that then or would we honor this?
We would honor whatever is the village board decides is in this agreement.
Okay, so let's see, so.
The language provided in here to answer that question provides a cap and protection.
So now to exceed one point three three six, is that what?
That's correct.
Proposing?
Yes.
Yeah, you had a question, yeah, I I um. No, being a business person, I'd like to know what my fees are going into a um into a project. I like to know what my costs are so I can have a a decent idea of. How I can take care of that 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 funding. Um, yeah, again, I understand our impact fees may go up, but I I I have no problem looking at this and saying. Hold our fees for the hundred and twenty days. And then if it's, if it doesn't go within a hundred and twenty days, then we have the ability to renegotiate.
I'm sorry, looking at these impact fees, these are twenty twenty one numbers for the police public works and parks facility impact fees, these are not twenty twenty two numbers.
Are you, are you on page seven, our copy? Or?
Page seven of what you just handed out.
Of what he handed out. Well, they're exactly the same as what we have them on our sheet.
Okay.
So these are, are you saying?
This is from the develop, this is from the agreement that we shared and we've read line back and forth. So the rate from which it's will twenty twenty one or not, I don't know, I just know that this is the number that we've been presenting.
And these are from twenty twenty one, you're saying? And you said police, public works and park? Just wanted to clear.
Mr. President, you have a question, so Katie did the fees now go up in twenty twenty two then?
They did go up in twenty twenty.
Yeah, I think that's where Jessica wanted.
Yep, yep.
And I think, you know, although I'm. I'm of the opinion that I'm okay with a hundred and twenty days if we do have to use current numbers. I don't, if these aren't current numbers, then we have, then it's bad on us, you know, we didn't provide those, but you know, we can. You know, we have to at least use the current.
Yeah, I understand, that's acceptable to us.
I agree with that, Jim. I mean, if you, if if everybody's okay with that, then I don't think we need to give them, you know. They're willing to say we will um pay the impact fees based on the twenty twenty two uh numbers. Or and hold them for four months with the understanding that they could go up and they could go down, at least this way the developer has solid number. Are we okay with that? Yeah, okay, alright, so we're agreeing with that. Anything else?
I have no other change to the development area.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
But I, but I. Kind of waiting for Jessica, I guess.
Yeah, that's fair. Jessica, while you're gone, the agreement is is regardless of what the actual. If the numbers are different in twenty twenty two, the developers agreed to pay the twenty twenty two rates. Whatever they may be currently.
Okay.
So, that that's been agreed to, so then we're moving on to the next question.
I think they'll block it for a hundred and twenty days. And from their building. Just says, thank you.
Um, so I just had a couple of questions, and I'm sorry, Amber, maybe I should ask you, so it's about um. The sewer, the Santaire sewer, so I'm looking at page three of the developer agreement. And it says, um, sewer will be sold by the developer and will be approved by the village engineer. So is that you or is that somebody that we contract with to go to the site, like we do at other developments?
No, that would be me reviewing the plans and improving them before they start.
Okay, so that, so so for that one, you're not going to the site to look at it and make sure everything's okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but if you're referring to the plans, approving the plans.
Um, which page are you on? I'm on page three at the top, second sentence, first sentence, the Santaire sewer main will be installed. Oh, as shown on the plans, plans to be approved by you.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, and um and then I have a question on page. Four, um, talking about the traffic study.
Okay.
And I didn't really see that we've decided on a specific cost share.
We haven't, so we've got to update the traffic study for all the developments in the area. And then that traffic study will determine how much traffic going through that intersection is attributed to each development as well as like background and existing traffic.
So part of this development agreement references the traffic study from August though. So are you saying there, I mean, I guess Jessica, there's gonna be a new traffic study when the two new developments are in and then we'll know? Because the traffic study that we have referenced. Um, first of all, it notes that the D O T information is from twenty eighteen. And they kind of estimate how many cars are traveling right now in today's world. But they did those studies on the day that there was half a day of school. When the school got out, it was at the end of the year, June fifth or something. So I um I guess I know we've had problems in the past, I'm not gonna say we are, we're gonna have problem now with the developer agreement, but. I'm, so I'm concerned about the cost share, I'm concerned about um the the traffic study that we're given is old. And we're kind of using that to say we're A okay with this development.
Right, so the eighteen numbers, the D O T does not update numbers every year, so as we go back through, it says on here, a new traffic. Impact analysis study that the village recently commissioned to be updated, that's occurring right now. Um, will use if there are any new D O T numbers, it will use that and then it will use the existing traffic counts that were taken when we did the original study. And then we'll update it. So we will have an updated study. Um, they're doing, we're doing, we're in the process of doing it for the seasons, but then there'll also be an actual design study. Um, for the actual intersection, which will assign costs. Um, based on percentages of traffic and the village board will will review that as well.
Okay, um, I am just concerned about that because what we're going forward on these two developments are, you know, we're referencing. Traffic patterns, what we're gonna do with uh Falls Road and Highway sixty. And so that is a concern for residents, so I am concerned about that.
What do, what would you like us to?
No, nothing, I I am, I'm I'm not saying you can do anything now.
Okay.
But the information that we were given in the last, you know, six months. Um, to me is old information, but yet that was utilized to, you know, to authorize the. The concept plan and now developments, so that's all I'm saying, it's not updated, I know I wish it was.
We wish it was too.
Yeah, right. That's all I have.
Uh, I'm on page three also, developer public improvements, I'm really confused about public versus private because. Therefore, uh, the water mains is is under public. Develop, public improvements by the development, but yet on your plan sheet, you refer to it as a private water main. So which is?
So if on the development, it's going to be private, but obviously they have to tie into water main within the right of way, so there will be a portion of the public. Of the main that is public within the right of way and then it will be private once it fits their development.
I I don't agree with that, that's very atypical.
I believe that follows the ordinance that we put in a couple of years ago about private maintenance and means.
I don't think you can safely have a private main. That you're gonna hook onto that is not completely under the control and maintenance of the water utility.
Because it, because it depends on if you color, call it a main or a lateral, right, it's not serving. Any other property, will never connect to this lateral or main and serve any other property, it only serves. This property, I mean, it's larger than your typical lateral, right, because it's a large.
Need. That's fine if it's only serves that, so you're saying that in the future, that main, which normally. Would be right in the Falls Road right away, is never gonna cross I forty three and go to the development in our future service area. That may require both water and sewer at some point in the future.
It's not our intent because there's already water on the east side of I forty three, so it would be closer to get water for properties on east side of forty three from the north. Where we already have it up by the hotels and the um restaurants.
Well, then then you're you're actually never going to loop that water main on that side. And you're gonna create a dead end serving who knows how many future units, which is not very good design. I don't agree with that.
Um, but I mean, does the, and that that philosophy is is sound, my question is. Does it? In the context of the pre-annexation agreement. Is the intent for this to be again, be on the in the right way to be public? We look at it as lateral, not serve any other property, and then it becomes basically that part of it becomes private once it enters the. The actual property of itself.
That is the way it is currently written, yes.
That's not to say that there's not. Really, when you're saying, I'm just looking at it from the context of how it's written. I mean. Normally, I mean, this town doesn't put water main in for what the current state is or maybe what would be ten years from now. They'll design a water main for fifty years. And lots can happen in between that and I would just assume have it be a public thing at first. The other thing that I'm a little confused about is we talk about as-built plans. So, according to the language I read, you're requiring the developer to provide. Files on the as-bills that can be incorporated into the.
The G I S.
Village's G I N.
Or on page six, page six, yes.
Um, yes. So, but if it's a private main. That wouldn't necessarily be required. I think it's important that we have it.
It's been our standard practice, that's language we've used in all development agreements I've done, whether it was private or public, just so that we have. We 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 want to know where those mains or laterals or whatever we consider them are. Um, our ordinance does allow us, even if it is considered private, if something happened to that main and there was a water main break in, it was a weekend and they couldn't get a contractor out there soon enough. Our standing ordinances would allow us to go on that property. You know, turn off valves, do whatever we needed to do so it wouldn't affect the rest of our system. But yes, they have standard always, always done the as-bills for us.
Alright, that, I'll stop at that because I'm, no matter where we go with this, I'm gonna be. Have a difference of opinion, but.
Yeah, Lisa.
And so is there a way that we could make that lateral public then, is that what you're saying, Tom, you think that it should be because. We should be able to know at all times, we should, you know, to to not rely on. The privacy of that main, of that lateral. I mean, what's the harm in that, what's the harm in 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 making it a?
If we want to make the, you know, the southern portion of that main that goes through their property public, we can discuss that.
I I mean, does that make sense to you in things?
To me it does, but you know, I'm from a different generation, so.
Well, yeah, but it sounds like you're you're looking more towards the future and so you're looking more long term.
I was ruled on the municipality being responsible for most, if not all of the public utilities. Just so we have control.
Having to go back.
Granted, I know there are agreements that have been passed that allow the village to step in and do what they would do if they owned it. So.
But in has that been consistent with village, uh, we've done it in the past with some of the larger developments such as like the commons?
My Amber.
I'll say no, it's not inconsistent. There was historical practice, there's newer practice, we do have a mix of situations throughout the village, for sure.
So in your professional opinion, how should this be done?
In recent years, we have looked at things when they're on private property, if they don't serve or would never be connected for other properties to use them, that it's a private means. It's only serving that property. I do understand trustee Krieger's comments though about, you know, crossing the freeway and and would we want to tie onto this in the future? I think our thoughts was that we would bring water main down from the north, it's already on the east side, but there absolutely could be a need in the future to have to loop that. Under the freeway somewhere else. Um, so if we want to make, there is a water main at least on initial plans, they haven't really gotten too far along in. Um, engineering plans, but there is a main, they show we kind of along the Falls Road, it would be on private property, but it would be along the Falls Road length. We could consider that public. Mr. McLaren, do you have a concern with making that the length on Fort Washington and Falls considered um public? Flare me, is that what you want to see?
Um. Late in the game, but that's the way I would.
It's not, we're not late in the game.
No, we have more.
So I, my recommendation.
In theory, I'm happy to work with the village the way that. This must go, I don't understand the implications of it, so I don't want to lose access to any land that we currently have. Um, and that's really important, um, so without understanding the implications of what in. What a public utility, the water does to our access to our land and your access to our land.
Who's responsible?
Well, they're.
That's a major issue is a right, you take possession of it, I'm 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 breath hungry, so I work with the water utility. Um, if we take, and it's it's public, then we would maintain it, if it's private, then you would maintain it, right? We would just merely come on and maintain higher hydrants for our own system if needed. And we would have need to establish easements for all of these lines.
Right, so that's one, the easement and access is my biggest concern, I'm happy to take a reduced impact fee and reduce maintenance and I think that's wonderful in theory. I just at the moment don't understand it and if if we're gonna lose access or have to move the building or just parking. Or we have to redesign the site, we're gonna lose time, which is precious as you can imagine, and we can't change access and. Uh, you know, we just would have to take a thorough look at it so we know what we're agreeing to.
Amber, do you just know that what you made or that with that age, that's a minimum achievement and then have a actual site plan?
I don't believe so.
So would you be okay?
No, how wide of a easement would you leave, utility easement?
Quickly twenty feet? So we'd be a good, you know.
We can put road over that. Yeah, and we have.
You can't, no, you can't, like, it would, your driveway would still go over it.
Okay.
Most of it would be in green space, we're driving, it's still go over it, if this is still, if this is still accurate, I feel like we made a loop around to this.
Yes, there is a loop, yeah. We're doing a big loop, um. And we're currently placing.
Correct.
And you want to put it in and you.
We would still put it in, we would just take ownership of it afterwards.
Wonderful. No, I don't think.
Yeah.
So in theory, um, we're not opposed to it as long as. Yeah, twenty five feet, so ten on the east side of the bikes, and what are we limited to do, how deep does it go? Doesn't change our driveway. Uh, we can landscape it as we normally would.
Yes.
Uh, no, this is definitely agrees though. Don't create no permanent structures. Um, okay, we're required for street trees at a certain point, but we'll just pick a different time.
We'll figure out which side they go to.
Alright, so what?
And what what is the village? From doing this?
So the village wants to be responsible for this infrastructure.
I think they should be.
Okay, and the.
I would give word to the people that are.
And he asked what we're gaining from it, I don't know, Tom, if you can. And what are we gaining by making it public versus private?
Uh, we're we're gaining the full control and safe safety of. The main and the water being provided and allowing us the ability to extend. With no plans to ask.
That meaningful, is that meaningful and is that the way it would? You would normally do it?
Well, well then, we're responsible for it versus you guys being responsible for it, so I think Tom is saying, we want to be responsible, we want to. Be accountable and make sure everything's fine, otherwise you would have to be responsible for it.
Is it worth it, we'll repair it? And I'm, no, I'm, and I'm, I like that part, believe me.
Water only?
Speaking about this. Yeah.
Which it doesn't necessarily look like that, I guess, based on we've moved it, but.
But the section along. Okay.
We are on.
Yep.
Item B.
For the.
The water main shall be installed by the developer as shown on the final plan through by village engineer. The public main, so we're gonna strike this second sentence. We'll connect. And extend along, and you know, along the north side of. And extend. Along the north side. Road for the Falls Road. For the length of the property.
Yeah.
And terminate with a curb sign, just remove that. Okay. Okay, so the new second sentence on section B will read, the public main will connect to the existing main. On the west side of Fort Washington Road and extend along the north side of Falls Road for the length of the property.
Very good.
So may include some language about how it shouldn't interfere with the current development plans. Uh, since we're making this language in a late change, we just want to make sure that we come up with a plan. We come up with a plan that's cohesive.
We'll leave it as is and put this approval subject to final review of the developer and staff.
That would be fun. Thank you, the first sentence of. Section B accomplishes that.
Yep.
Perfect.
For Amber, yeah, um, so page five, under approval and transfer of improvements. That, um, all developer public improvement construction shall be inspected and tested. By the village engineer or consultant retained by the village. Who sure complies. So if you don't have time, you will have to have somebody from the outside come and do it, correct?
And who will pay for that? So there's another change, that if it is public. We will have to have an inspector out there to inspect and watch its installation.
Yeah.
And who will pay that will get charged back to the developer.
Yep.
And the developer will pay for that.
Yes.
Where if it was private. We don't necessarily inspect it on private property.
Really? At all? You don't look at it at all? To make sure anything's okay with it?
And we're not out there full time watching every piece of pipe go in, no.
Wow. It seems backwards to me.
On private property.
I know that you think backwards to me, thinking private and then if something, you know, goes wrong, like that could affect the whole, with the money.
So seeing as this is a request that those made. I don't know why we ought to pay that at an administrative.
How many hours does it take Amber to be out there to to look at that?
Oh geez, I don't know how many hundreds of feet the south property line is, I'm going to guess it could be a week's worth of work.
And that is, and that has been a historic chargeback. Um, that that inspection of public infrastructure as it's being installed has historically been a chargeback to the developer.
Oh, that seems backwards to me. It could be less than that, I mean, there's no pipes coming off of it, it's a straight line of pipe.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just in time, that is public, we're going to be in charge of it, but we're going to charge it for it.
We've. Yeah, alright, then we'll eat it and we'll pay for it. The administration of it. As is standard.
Other ends. Okay, so what I'm hearing then is one. Entertaining a motion for the approval of communication development agreement. With the changes that were identified regarding the name, um, and then subject to file. The rule of staff and developers on the in that motion.
I I just wanted to clarify that I did. Um, per um, the clerks point out that we did have some outdated. Fee rates and those will obviously be updated.
Right, and everybody's agreed that we do the twenty twenty.
Twenty-two rates, not exceed. Right, okay.
Alright, in that motion.
I'll make the motion second.
The second file comment. Hearing on all favor. I propose.
Yeah.
Show one may, let's move forward. Cool, um, item B is reported by commission, all the items are really. Related to the same project, you let's take them separate or we can do a summary and we can take them out. I'll leave it up to the. Going forward, I will wish to have this. We'll take that.
Yep.
Understand a motion for items one, two, and three of the fact mission, the ordinance proving the annexation petition, the ordinance to rezone. To rural holding thirty-five to P U D and and approve this request survey map. Only for motion.
Second.
Motion second, comments, questions? Hearing on all favor. Any opposed?
Next.
Next.
Throw of hands on favor. One, two, three, four, four, uh, three named and motion passes. Okay, you're all good. Let's move on, item C, reported to the board of public works, and uh, first item is approve the additional cost incurred by. Energy genetics for electrical installation services not to exceed fourteen thousand twelve dollars. Part of water with water, uh, data, radio, telemetry, network upgrade project.
Tom, I want to approve.
I'm second, motion a second, comments, questions? Hearing on all favor.
Alright.
Opposed? That motion passes, item two is a motion to award contract twenty-three dash zero one sidewalk replacement to beard sleeve concrete. Of listening for a contract amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars thirty-three cents.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion a second on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, item two is no motion to award project twenty-three dash oh two. The street utility improvement project to donor of Luxembourg, Wisconsin for a contract cost not to exceed three point one five seven nine hundred. Point thirty. Uh, dollars, motion, no.
Make the motion.
Motion in a second, uh, final comments on that. Hearing on all favor.
Alright.
And opposed. That motion passes, and for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two stormor annual report.
I'll make the motion.
Second, motion a second, for any kind of, uh, Amber, any kind of feedback you want to give, or any kind of overview, summary, thirty seconds?
No, it's really our standard report to the D and R, no major changes this year, we'll see a lot of changes coming in the coming year with our new permit.
Okay, motion a second on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, item D, fire EMS.
Yes, um, a- as the village board knows, we do have a working group, um, that does meet and has been exploring. Um, the notion of consolidated fire EMS services. Um, while this, while the dynamics of the group has changed over time, that was initially, um, city of Cedarburg, town of Cedarburg. Grafton, uh, Sockville, Port Washington, um, right up front, um, the Cedarburgs, if you will, um, decided to. Um, pursue their own research, um, and that left Grafton, Sockville and Port Washington engaged in discussions. Um, that said, um, in response, uh, to recent media coverage and information received. From Port Washington, port Washington pertaining to ongoing exploration of potential consolidation of fire and EMS services. Grafton and Sockville representatives, uh, from this work group. Met and felt it important to apprise the entire village board of the current status of these ongoing discussions, um, in light of. As I mentioned, that recent media coverage and information that has been received. Uh, through multiple sources in public meetings and in the media, it appears unclear whether or not Port Washington wishes to continue. To study a fire and EMS services consolidation with Sockville and Grafton. That said, there have been strong statements made against consolidation efforts, but also some comments in favor. Moreover, there are concerns among the, um, working group of that, uh, with the presentation of draft and incomplete data by Port Washington. From the working group, uh, as a point of comparison when discussing potential costs of consolidation. Which led to some of this public feedback that has been, um, reported. All of this being said, both Grafton and Sockville stakeholders felt it very important to focus on exploring the potential for consolidation among our two communities. With a willingness to include additional stakeholders who are truly engaged and interested in that process. Um, so that is where we stand as, uh, of today. Um, that said, I wanted to provide an update with regards to these ongoing working group, um, discussions in light of these recent developments, um. Uh, this recent meeting between Sockville and, um, Grafton, um, stakeholders, um, both trustees, Lord and Harbeck. Uh, were present, I I'm certain they'd be willing to share their thoughts on the discussion as well, but, um. Wha- uh, what I summarize here for the board this evening is is kind of a snapshot in time where we're at today.
Yeah, okay, um, so Chief Price did, uh, provide a link to us from the common council. Meeting where they discussed it. And it was interesting to hear them say, I mean, there were a couple of members that. That I felt like they wanted to go forward with it and, um, but they were unsure, and there was some question as to. The amount of money that was being, um, put out there. With the combination of Grafton, Sockville, Port Washington versus Grafton, Sockville together. And Port Washington on their own, and they were uneasy, um, with. Though I think it was approximately three to five hundred thousand dollars. That they felt that they were going to have to pay in excess of what they should. Um. They they did reference that they would talk more at the end of the summer. And I feel like we've been doing this a long time. Almost two years, Chief Price. And, um, they did say, oh, yes, if things didn't work out, they'd be willing, you know, to kind of work. With other groups. And I just, we we got to get going is is what I feel, and if, you know, I feel like we're happy to take anybody on, but. I hope that we don't drag our feet.
Yeah, I I concur with, um, with trustee Harbeck, I I think that our our chief has done a wonderful job of. Really putting everything out there on what it would take to have a really professional. Um, good for Grafton and Sockville Fire Department, and you know, offered that as well, anybody else who wants to be part of this. And I I just think at this point in time, it's 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 like having one foot in the water and one foot out and saying. Maybe we'll be in and maybe we won't, I think we need to move forward, uh, to really get this going so that we can have an effort to. Form the consolidator purpose.
So while I'm not looking for any formal action, uh, from the village board this evening, um, the discussion at that, um. Grafton, Sockville stakeholder group, um, the consensus there was, it was absolutely necessary to get before. The village boards, our respective village boards and provide this update to you, um, a- as soon as possible. And to reiterate our commitment with regards to Grafton and Sockville in continuing these discussions and continuing that exploration. To see what we can accomplish.
I think some of the issue is. Nobody has been able to prove it. So if we can. Do this. Like, you know, we go to the Sockville, then we've got, there's an example out there, a policy work. And I think, you know, that may be a lot of the trepidation that's out there is, you know. You know, do I want to open up my checkbook before I know what I'm getting? And I think if we can make it work, we can set the example. I don't think it, you know, I think it's just going to be a matter of time till people decide to say, okay, it works, um, you know. The current situation that we have, it's not sustainable, um, it's not just fire, it's all volunteer. I mean, I don't know if any of you guys were listening, the. National state, the, uh, National Guard in the state of Wisconsin is. Extremely short, they can't find people, so it's not just, it's not an issue that's limited to fire and emergency, it's 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 a thing. Um, and if we don't address it. You know, it's not going to go away. So I think the board is pretty very supportive on continuing the consolidation effort, but they're. Working with Sockville and we'll see where it ends up, I think, uh, you still have the force for the board. Um. Not, not yet, yes, Thomas Lane, yes, okay, alright.
Very good.
Thank you.
Forward.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to Heather, covering the officers and folks, Jesse.
Certainly, a few, uh, items for the village board this evening, um, Saturday, April first is the annual Easter egg hunt at Centennial Park, this is kind of the symbolic. Opening of the parks, uh, if you will, um, Public Works and Parks and Recreation have been, uh, hard at work with regards to. Getting, uh, painting done, interior painting and and cleanup work. Um, that said, uh, the DPW has been quite busy with forestry work, uh, in the parks and around the village, um, following the recent heavy snowfalls to, uh, clean up. The limb, broken limbs and whatnot, um, so a lot of work going on, um, throughout the village and in our parks in particular, so. Um, that said, the last item I have, um, is, um, that in-person absentee voting starts tomorrow at village hall and runs through March thirty-first. Um, it will be in the committee room and staffed by, um, election workers. Um, in order to ma- make sure that folks have that opportunity to, um, uh, in-person absentee vote. That is what I have this evening.
Okay, Amber, Brett, then just kind of add. Okay, any questions, thoughts, comments, yes?
Yeah, um, Amber, um, I I know you're aware of the issues that we're having over on Hunter's Lane with the construction that's going over there. I I I think, uh, Friday was a really bad day, I had five emails, all in rapid succession and a couple of texts. And I appreciate you for getting back to the folks over there, but do you have any update on what's going on over there?
Yeah, so obviously it's been a really rough winter for construction, right? We haven't had a really solid. Freeze of the ground, there's been lots of ups and downs in temperatures, so it is a fairly large construction site, we have struggled at a staff level to get them to. Keep their tracking pad clean, keep the mud off the roads, you know, they have a lot of, a lot of different contractors over there that are parking and taking up a lot of the roadway. Um, I was hoping to meet with them before tonight, but I have a meeting scheduled first thing tomorrow morning, um, with Jimmy, check our building inspector, and we're going to meet with a contractor over there to hopefully. Explain what needs to be done to kind of rectify the situation as we're just getting into warm, messy spring here. Um, it's not going to get any better.
Yeah, I think one of the concern they have is that the contractors are parking up and down and street and blocking mailboxes, and of course, I don't want to go into USPS. Uh, regulations on delivery of of mail, which came to me, but I think that, I think the thing is, is that is it possible over there that we? Um, may be able to post temporary, you know, parking signs, or should we, I just would like to see that that concern, um, you know, addressed.
Yes, we did, uh, maybe a month or so ago, we put no parking, or I had the contractor put no parking on the south side of the road to try and limit all their parking on one side. Which left a little bit more of the roadway open for traffic to get through, um, but absolutely, we're having consistent problems near certain mailboxes now on just the north side. We could, we could do some additional.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Jesse, I have one thing to just kind of throw up there. We're coming to the end of the election year. And, um, maybe going forward with the new board. And a new election year, there might be some consideration or maybe a change in the process of. Having finance on a different night, if that's something that people might want to do, so that we don't always abut against the village board.
That can absolutely be a policy discussion to be had, yep.
So I just want to put it out there for people to think about, just for the future, so. So sometimes we don't have to keep putting things back. To bring them forward, there's just something to think about.
Yes, it would, it that would have to come through committee, as I recall, it's set by code as to what night it meets, um, so that would definitely have to come through committee and we could, yeah. If if there's interest there, we can absolutely have that policy discussion.
And I think we also need to address those codes of appointment, I think. Don't want to say wanty publicly, but they're wanty. And, uh, they they aren't consistent to roll on on call and who and who appoints, uh, who appoints chairs and not.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, let's move forward, there's no licenses, item nine, reported bills, and again, most improved bill of benefits, four hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars. Fifty cents.
Alright, that motion.
My second.
Motion a second, the usual back and forth emails, qualifications, any other questions on the bill?
I have one, alright, two, Jesse, um, so I just noticed at the last minute and didn't have time to check with somebody, I was fucking bitter. There were, um, in the last six weeks, there have been a number of bills. Um. From Beeloo Better. For personnel issues. That total almost fourteen thousand dollars. And I I am concerned about that, and I think I think that's a lot of money, and. I would ask possibly that the village board could have a closed session at some point talking about. The where's that going, or I know there's something you don't need to know about, but, um, how much more is this, you know, going to be happening? And I don't know of any idea about this, so. We could possibly do a closed session or something about that. That's a lot of money for personnel issues.
Any other questions on the bills?
I got one. Um. Regarding legal for you. For for. Quite a period of time for husband and fine, we get a randomized statement from them. Now it just says husband and buying twenty-seven hundred dollars.
I would have to check what the recent invoice was, um, as I get them, I forward them, I will, um, review.
But just so like. What are we getting for that?
Sure, um, I do know, I know, understand they do put descriptors on there, but I would have to check that last bill and see what what those descriptors said and. Um, I can report back.
No questions on the bills? Motion a second on favor.
Alright.
That motion passes, I intend motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
Second, motion in a second on favor.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.